October 18th, Acting Planning Board. Take a minute to read the minutes and do those first. Get them out of the way. Please. I was so surprised when I saw you guys doing that roof yesterday off of that bucket thing.
Probably tied in.
I noticed that. I figured you'd have to be just because, well, plus, anybody driving by can see if you weren't. And this is, OSHA grabs stuff like this. I've seen some stop guys in Sanford working on homes right on Waterlander on Main Street, and they haven't got everything they need. An OSHA guy's driving by or someone's driving by stops a job. It happened to us on a job at Kennybunk. The other, the guys who were working on the roof at the time, they got shut down by OSHA. Driving down Route 1, saw these guys on this big old barn roof, not strapped up and all that kind of jazz. But Kenny and his boy, A1, strapped in. I've never seen anybody use that before for shilling on a roof.
This?
Yeah.
That's one we've done.
Really?
Yeah.
God. Take all the fun out of this.
It's all the way to the ground.
Ah, please. There's no staging, there's no roof brackets, no planks, and then I've nailed it using a systematic guess. So, take a motion anytime you guys are ready.
I'm gonna do something that says red.
I'll second the motion.
Alright. Any changes or corrections?
On the action item under the...
Which one?
Timothy Aiken. Can we talk about the sign ordinance? Or just to look, take a look over his?
Which page, one or two?
Page one, the bottom.
Oh, sorry, sorry. The building department staff. That's Brenda and Ken. And Ken was gonna, uh... Ken was gonna see how our new sign ordinance was working. And if there were any adjustments he thought needed to be made, he was going to bring it to our attention somewhere down the road. But anytime it says building department staff, it's these two guys right here. None of us.
So that's not under part, that's not under the terms of Aiken?
Well, it kind of is because the discussion came up about all those signs, all the signs he had had up there and how he was taking a bunch of them down.
And that he was designing a new one?
Yes.
And...
The size.
And Kenny could pretty much take care of it under the new ordinance. He was gonna get back to us regarding other stuff like that.
Any problems or changes that we might need to make with the sign ordinance?
Yeah, 'cause there was one resolved part of it. Wasn't there any NCC or something in it?
The issue was the amount of signs he had, we thought it was covered under, when we did the zoning ordinance, it says commercial zone. He's got a commercial use in a residential zone, so it's a loophole that we can look at.
Or rural, actually.
Rural.
Is that rural? Where's Arthur? Any other changes or corrections or comments? Alright, then, all's in favor of aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? That is good. So... Let's see. One, two, three, four. Gavin's turn to vote for Arthur until Arthur shows up, if he does. Okay, best practical location application, 33 Asper Lane. We had a site walk here last Monday, and let's discuss it. Or take a motion, whatever you guys wanna do. We were all there except for Bob Smith.
I hung up to it. I absolutely forgot. No other reason, no good excuse at all.
Isn't the planning board your life?
You retired, don't you?
On Thursday, you got his number, isn't it? It's when it's two.
That's why we post notices we're on target in the paper.
That's right.
Wrong paper, though. Well, you can't burn them all now. Uh, anyone have any comments?
Tom, do we have any more small copies of that packet that we didn't have for us today?
Didn't you give you guys a little box? Are you taking all that?
Not me.
I use the owner's copy and I give it back.
I just have my original one submitted.
The stuff that you... Is that floating around, just in case someone wants to look at? Oh, ours, did you have one?
Just wanted to give details, easier to see on.
Does he have a machine there on stormwater apparatus or what he's proposing? He's talking in the talk, but I was curious if they have a machine.
Um, probably.
Well, well, drawn and judged, but nothing... It's, it's really extraordinary. I don't notice anything.
How about this thing? Do you have a copy of this thing?
That's a septic thing?
I think that's... Yeah, that's a septic design.
With that included?
Uh, no. It's just designed septic, what test holes they dug, what the soil, soil types are like.
Yeah.
Is this going around as that goes?
You can pass it around. I don't know if everyone's seen it. I don't know if everyone has a copy of that.
No, I don't. Now, there's nothing in here. Slub surface. So, this guy is gonna use a pre-treatment septic or other?
Up in the tank, yeah.
Yeah.
White knight is the common one. A lot of them use that.
And what exactly does it do offhand, do you know?
Airates it.
So it's, uh, there's some kind of...
Mechanical.
Really?
And that's similar when we were talking about the, um...
We're there in that.
Limited impact development, chasing down that stuff. I was comparing it to this here, that this is a maintenance item that is also difficult to track, the same thing.
Does he have to sign up for some type of, uh...
No, that's a holding tag. If you have a holding tag, you sign it on the pump, and if you're not pumping, he...
But as far as this, this thing doesn't require any kind of regular semi...
It's yearly maintenance.
Yearly maintenance.
Yeah, but it's not required for him to have it done.
Oh, really? But the unit itself requires yearly maintenance.
Exactly, yeah. There's no legal requirement for him to have it done with a mechanism to tell us when it's not being done.
Now, is that something we can stipulate or no? I, of course, you're from New Hampshire, you can say no, so...
What is the maintenance, Kenny, is it a filter or some kind?
Yeah, it's an enzyme they rechange out and they make sure it's properly working and functioning.
Couldn't we fall that into your notion of how you were proposing to key these in the computers or something? So that they were, I forget what the lay of the proposal was.
Yeah, the shame.
Just looking to see who the manufacturer was with it.
The last, uh...
There's a good chance it's not required for the permitting. They're just doing it to go above and beyond the bare minimum standard.
Well, they, this, I guess this may be border plate, these, these notations here about the septic design. But the last one is, if an advanced wastewater treatment unit is, unit is part of the design, the system shall be operated and maintained per manufacturer's specifications. Now, if the manufacturer of whatever he uses requires it to be maintained yearly, then maybe we should just, maybe we could stipulate that whatever maintenance needs to be done on this unit will be, you know, manufacturers' instructions will be complied with. And can we say a notification sent to the code office?
Every year?
Or whatever the manufacturer...
I really think, how do I know when he hasn't notified me in, you know, five, six years? You know, he's notified me for four or five. And you were looking for soft...
Then that's the computer program that you guys are talking about that pops up when certain issues... I mean, this is something that can be done, correct?
Yeah.
With computers, they can do that kind of stuff nowadays?
Yeah, he used to have a day, he'd just in the old fashioned outlook, he'd decide that the heat come up every year.
Really?
Yeah. Of course, we're gonna need to have hundreds of them popping up every day.
That's what I'm saying, this is a, it's, this is a small section of it. The limited impact development stuff would be much larger.
Right, but I don't imagine, well...
But you only have to do something, I mean, you'd be notified that something had transpired, some kind of maintenance agreement had been adhered to. And then you would only have to do something if there was, there'd have to be a method whereby you were assured of that notification.
He sent us a slip, his, uh, the receipt for it.
Yeah, yeah. From the company. You would only have to do anything with those guys that were, you know, not cooperating.
Well, we're gonna have to send them a letter to send us a letter, 'cause they're not gonna remember next October, and the following October, and the following October. It's like registering your cat. The only reason you do is because the cop's waiting at the toll booth.
Well, one of the, one of them do a lot of preparations with their camps before winter time, so it could be that kind of thing where, you know, they're...
Are they gonna live every year around, do you know?
Yeah, it's camp.
It is just a camp. So then they might be, they might be in a position, this particular one, to do some kind of semi-shut down, you know, in the fall. And this may be something that might come up there, or in the spring when they open up. But if we're gonna make these regulations, we oughta have some way of following up on them, otherwise it's pointless. And, you know, I'm all for leaving people alone, but if we're gonna enact these things, then we have to follow up with them, you know?
And it's on behalf of this guy's, you know, you've always got somebody living next door to somebody. And on behalf of the butters and, and the lake friendage, the immediate, you know, proximate and the whole lake, you want to do this right?
The backfire to it is if I tell him he needs to do this, I mean, there should be a fee or something like that, or the town sucks it up, they'll just pull the pre-treatment out. I don't think it's required yet. They're doing it to be over and above.
Well, also, they'd need 19 chambers if they didn't have pre-treatment. They go with pre-treatment, they only need 15 chambers.
Yeah.
So there's less area that's gonna be dug up, there's less, you know, chambers they have to buy. I don't know that some, well...
This particular individual, I think we...
I don't think, yeah, I don't think there'll be an issue with this.
He'll agree to whatever conditions you put onto it.
Right. But I think somebody would be almost cutting off their nose to spite their face if they're gonna pull out the, a pre-treatment just 'cause they didn't wanna go through some kind of routine maintenance, or at least let the town know that they did. But, who knows?
What if we ever do, don't you have tanks that you still have to keep, old septic tanks that you still keep track of to make sure people are pumping them or something?
Most people should be maintaining those every three to five years on their own.
Oh, okay.
Which we don't track that down either. The manufacturer's gonna tell you to de-pump your own tank.
I know that a long time ago, when we approved a holding tank, we required that, uh, every year when they had, or whenever they had pumped out, that we got a copy of, you know, his bill, his slip.
From a holding tank?
From a holding tank, yeah.
Not a regular septic system?
No, 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 no.
But your regular septic system, the manufacturer's gonna tell you to be pumping that every three to five years too. And we're not tracking those down.
Yeah, but a regular septic system is different than this particular one where he's got this mechanism that needs to be, uh... If this mechanism fails, I think it's gonna be more of an issue than, if somebody's septic fails, everybody knows about it. 'Cause you can smell it, or you can see it running out of, above the ground. And that's gonna be a visible thing, whereas if this guy's, uh, pre-treatment's not working, you're not necessarily gonna know, the stuff's gonna go into the various chambers and go into the ground and it may not be triggered the way it should've been. So, I would think, I would think whatever the manufacturer requires as far as maintenance is something that, you know, we should encourage the, the people to have done. Otherwise, they lose their warranty, you know, what's the point of, uh...
Are we talking just the septic system or the furnace and every other thing that has manufacturer's warranty throughout the whole house?
Just, yeah, but how many of them require that? In this manufacturer, they may or not require any kind of maintenance on this.
I think they're all looking.
If they take enzymes, they probably would.
The areas of concern would be areas that would impact the lake. You certainly wouldn't...
Yeah, we don't care about my furnace up there.
It's true. But I mean, and we would, you, you had raised the concept, Ken, you were hoping for some help fleshing it out with the notion of applying this kind of a confirmation receipt from the applicant. Not just in this case, but in all cases of, uh, site relocations where, in the shoreline zone, where they're putting in LID apparatus that needs maintenance, you know?
Yeah, you were talking about how you keep track of, of plant, you know, what have people have to do for planting.
Or their, um...
Or what Joe Anderson tells them to do.
Exactly, but I don't go back in three to five years to see if it's done.
Yeah, that's just initial. He just...
Oh, so it's just initial, okay.
Exactly. Again, just trying to keep it down to one, five, a person.
But, but in terms of apparatus, you know, more technical apparatus, not necessarily planting, you know, health, but ensuring that different stormwater management devices like, that are kept clean and, you know, debris, et cetera, so that they function well. If they, if they allow, if they allow to get plugged up, they don't work.
Is there a problem in town if a program like that is blocked so that it pops up when various places need attention? And you would then be expecting something from that homeowner? And if that didn't come, that same program probably could be set up so that it generates a letter to be sent out where it gave minimal, minimal impact on staff here?
It would be down to a postcard. And let's just say it's not the Joneses anymore, it's the Smiths that own it. So I'm still gonna check the Smiths down.
Yeah, good point.
It's, as soon as we started, it's gonna be a lot of work.
Good point.
I mean, I've only got 15 or 20 of them out there now, but...
15 or 20 of what?
These pre-treatments.
Really? That ready?
A lot of the designers are doing it because the people want to protect the lake as much as possible. Not because they need to.
Well, if that's why they're doing it, then I don't, I don't see a problem with them making sure that the maintenance is done then. I mean, you know, if somebody's putting this in because they wanna protect the lake, then let's just remind them that, you know, every year or every two years or whatever, it needs to be maintained, otherwise you're not doing what you wanted to do. We're only looking out for you, you know, big government.
We all have to have our vehicles inspected once a year to...
Yeah, that's a sticker right there with the number right in front of your face.
That's a scam. I don't even wanna get into that.
And, uh, I mean, it could be as simple as a sticker on the electrical panel with a date that, that needs to be done or something.
Yeah.
But...
I like that.
Do you like that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, but water treatment systems and stuff aren't monitored by, you know...
And the, and the drinking water?
We have calcium put into our water through a tank. It's up to us to figure out if it's running low or not.
Well, you have that done on your own, that was never, that wasn't required or it wasn't, was that part of the original plan?
Yeah, but the pre-treatment isn't required.
It reduces a few changes.
It's a smaller chamber.
Yeah. But I mean, they could go to algae in drains and shrink this down another third, little, like, little mattresses. I mean, they could make the system smaller. It's not the best system out there. This is a much more reliable system.
Well, unless you can vote on it or... Yeah, are there any other concerns we have right now with, uh, with this guy's property?
I think we need a little more of a, uh... A concept of what the, uh, how this is gonna work. And Kenny's refreshing this with one eye, so I don't know where to go with it.
Well, the other arm would be the Selectment and Warrant Finance Committee allocating more money for more software to start this.
Is that what we need?
Eventually, that's where you're gonna go to, sure.
This isn't something you guys can sell yourself.
Technology keeps changing, we keep it dark and narrow all the time.
I mean, it could be a Google Calendar finale to use that pops up. As simple as that, but I mean, it takes time to run it and...
We have a job to keep the lakes clean, and if it costs us a little bit of money to do it, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that.
Well, maybe that might be something that, when you guys talk about fees for building, permits, all this kind of jazz, it may be something that's incorporated into...
A pre-treatment tank?
Yeah, if you, if you go with a pre-treatment tank, we're gonna add X amount of dollars. Nothing, you know, nothing that's gonna, you know, shut the place down, but to cover us checking up on you every, you know, couple of years or whatever it takes.
For the rest of the, the system's life.
Just, just until we don't care anymore.
How are you gonna apply that same concept to the LID apparatus that needs maintenance?
It's basically the same.
Same thing?
So they get a note that says, have you raked your leaves? Have you cleaned your gutter?
Yeah, have you cleaned out the, the drains or, yeah, right, absolutely.
Wasn't that kind of what the new Darni was doing?
They were checking the fees at the beginning. For each time you used a different piece of an effort, which really is discouraging from putting them in.
Right, right. Nobody was only $10 and $25 depending on the, the amount. Yeah, it wasn't that much. If they're putting in a whole new camp, I mean, here.
I thought we had a less burdensome way to do this that was, that arose from your ready plan a couple...
I think we talked about just allow an act, a easement onto the property. The town had an easement on the property, then sending the youth conservation groups out to maintain them. And then the town just pays them directly.
Yeah, but we, we, we can't authorize the youth conservation quarter going do this or that or the other thing.
Or you could have the road agents.
I think we'd be better off if we were gonna do that, they have somebody directly tied with the town doing it versus, you know, the YCC from doing it, 'cause they're not really an entity of the town.
But they're, they're not scared of you, are they?
No.
No, but they could've been some of the people that installed these methods. And maintaining them is very similar to it, and they're gonna be the cheapest avenue. But I haven't talked to Linda or anything about it yet, or...
The notion, when you originally laid it out, I thought was, and I need some help recalling this, was that it was gonna be minimally burdensome to the applicant and that it would require a notification to your office that X, Y, and Z maintenance agreements initially, you know, involved with the application have been adhered to in September of 13.
If they're adhering to them, that's the easy part. What happens when we haven't heard from them, we send them a letter, send them a second letter? The owners are there.
And then you've had some notion of, of, that, that, well, you had an avenue mapped out on that, I don't recall exactly.
The highway to do it would be, the town has an easement on the property, you've ignored the three notices, the town comes out and does it, sends you a bill, and it goes onto your tax bill. Ideally, I'd just as soon pay the money to, you know, an extra three, four, $5,000 to the youth conservations. They just go through and maintain them every year, give them a list.
They can't do all these types of needs, so it's more than they can do.
Well, that, that's...
Depends on the scope of the project, 'cause it's just vacuuming.
Yeah.
We're gonna need some projects they can't maintain.
Yep.
And that's a good notion maybe, but I think we're, um, maybe grasping at straws when we try to put that burden on a voluntary organization.
That is, that is being supplemented. You'd obviously be giving them more money if it's something they're interested in, maintaining it. They may be able to do it early season and late season or rainy days or something. And they may pick up a kid or two extra for it. So I, I think that'd be something to talk to Linda and Dustin about, see if they're even interested. Otherwise, I think your only mechanism is, uh, the town has an easement, and if it's not done, the town comes on the property and does the maintenance. And builds you for it.
Do we have an other easement that is something that we would have to add to the permit?
You would have to have an easement.
We'll still have to pay more.
The deed would have to be updated.
We'll send a bill.
Now, if they had a mortgage on the property, I don't know if the mortgage...
What would be going, what would happen?
Or would, would easement...
Six pitches.
I don't know.
No, I don't think, but the town, all they could do is call me.
You guys would pitch for us, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it, yeah, it strikes me as...
Well, it's much better than bonding and lines of credit and all that, 'cause that just all disappears.
I don't know, I like the bag-o cash myself. They put a bag-o cash up front, we keeping a little safe deposit box up at my place.
Make interest out of it.
Boy, I got some interest for it. You know, we're just, if they don't, if they don't take care of it, then we do. You know, pull some money out.
Yep. Well, at that point, I would take care of it, 'cause you've got my money. I've already paid you to maintain it.
Aren't there legal... What are you doing with the condo association? I'm not really sure. A town can become a condo association, you know?
Well, from time to time, we require some line of credit or some kind of, uh, what thing is it?
Guarantee.
Yeah, 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 a guarantee that if the job, whatever it is, doesn't get completed, money has been set aside that we have access to, that we can then complete the job, or at least clean it up.
Is this gonna be in perpetuity, or is it gonna be a yearly fee or...
No, usually those things, they're like for a subdivision. Somebody starts it and they lose their money and the roads need to be, you know, whatever needs to be finished.
What do you mean for this maintenance stuff? You're gonna...
That's a different deal.
Are you gonna charge upfront to cover years and years?
Don't know. Don't know.
Hold a mortgage?
I know, that's just it.
Just, you know, hand over your house to the town.
And you give them that money back when they sell the house and the new people come and they have to put money out?
Well, that's, that's the thing against having some kind of a, a bond or a bag-o cash or something.
Can you get the, the lake associations to step up on some of this stuff? I mean, it's in their interest.
Yeah, but you make it, you make it one association that handles it better than another one, and some people get treated differently than other people, and then you've got a whole discrimination bullshit going on.
And square, my association only covers so many people.
And we'll get held in a court.
By far, it's not a volunteer organization.
Well, there's another whole issue, I mean, you know, we're, it's all part of the lake.
With the youth conservation, at least there's workers' comp, insurance, liability, they're covered.
That also takes away from those guys doing the projects that they do.
Unless they, if they were interested, again, we, I haven't talked to anybody, but they may not want anything to do with it. But if they were, are they, with the X amount of dollars additional, they could pick up two extra people or something like that?
They can handle a bigger load.
But they would only be doing the neglected sites, right? Because some people have caretakers and some people have people that open and close their condos for them. They can certainly.
Yep, maintain, depends what it is.
Right. Depends what the maintenance involves. If it's simple, like just raking the, the leaves off and, and the crap off your riprap drain, that's, you know, I could do that, but if it's something that's more involved, change, and change it effluent or not effluent, change the enzyme or some bullshit.
Well, that's plumbing, that's not, that's separate. We're talking, I thought we slipped into the BMPs. I thought we were talking about BMPs.
Originally, we were still looking at this best possible location too, so.
I was surprised with, Acting Lakehead Watership was looking at a project, it was a huge riprap project, and then they explained to me, every three to five years, you need to pull all those rocks out, clean them and put them back in.
Oh, that's BS.
Uh, no, that's, to me, that would be a huge maintenance ideal.
You know, the DNP told us over here in Eagle's Trace that the maintenance side of the, the water issues, the flowing water issues, admittedly, from their point of view, is very difficult to monitor. In fact, we probably wouldn't see if there were issues unless it was reported.
Yep.
I mean, so they can't account for it either. Never mind, you know, at the level that we're at, they're talking, this is at the state level. They, they'll, it just came.
They, they can't go around to these little places like this, so yeah.
We've got more people in this room than the DNP has looking after the whole scene. Well, so what happens is there's, there's an issue with runoff and somebody reports it to somebody.
Right.
If you tell them there's an issue with the runoff, then nothing happens.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not sure how you get around that. Ultimately, I mean, you have different CEOs, you have different planning boards, you're gonna transition ownerships of properties. I think you just do the best you can do at the time.
A lot of it is just education.
Yeah, nobody, nobody wants to pollute the lakes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about that, you know?
There's varying degrees of enthusiasm over.
Yeah, that's. Well, things, things, yeah, things like putting in new septic systems and that kind of stuff. Nobody wants to spend the money on.
The reason that granted it somewhat maybe a complicated, it's got some complication to the method as to how we might improve this, but the fact that these kinds of things haven't been maybe attempted or succeeded before is the, is the reason why the lakes are kind of flatlining. So I think we have a lot of body of evidence in front of us from Linda that's kind of indicated we ought to maybe do our best this go around to see if we can maybe tighten up some areas where we could do better.
See, but I mean, you're gonna do it like best, best possible location kind of thing. Every time something comes up, whether it's a building permit or best possible location, whatever it is, you're gonna implement whatever needs to be done at that point to, you know, those best management, management practices are a runoff. And then maybe every five years, somebody is gonna go around and review all the work that's been done and see if it needs, if there needs to be maintenance done or, and I don't know who that somebody is, but I mean, it just seems to me you do everything on one, and as each one of these things comes up, you do the best you can with it.
But at that point, you need authorization into the property and figure out, you know, you're doing the work or you're maintaining.
Well, with the system you had where it's a notification system, the town wouldn't necessarily have to go to the property. They're notified the maintenance hasn't been completed, completed. They send out postcards, still isn't completed or whatever. They have to make a call to the, the maintenance company or to the conservation corps and say, this needs to be done at X and X location and could you, you know, please contact the owner so, and set an appointment with them because it needs to be done.
What if they send in a CAD saying it's all done? Are we still going out to check to make sure it's all done?
Well, it has to be verified by somebody who's been doing maintenance.
Exactly. I mean, you could third party.
Like you're talking about.
It's getting expensive.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on what the maintenance is. I mean, if something like a pre-treatment tank, I mean, maybe you guys would do it yourselves. I'm not really sure. I don't know enough about the tank, but some of the types of maintenance are too thorough and intensive for the owner to do, so they're gonna need to hire someone and, and for those type of treatments or mechanisms, I think it would be good to have, you know, some sort of system like that, notification.
What about initial language in, in the permitting process whereby the, the owner is agreeing to this process going forward?
It's a condition.
At the outset?
Yeah.
It's a condition.
The, as part of the maintenance agreement of notification, that permission to review on a three or five year basis is to get by granted with John Doe's signature. There's gotta be ways to do this.
Yeah, I'm sure, like this particular Greg here, I'm sure he wouldn't have any problem with that.
It's when Steve owns it, this becomes the issue.
Oh, you mean, were you talking about change of ownership?
Exactly. Just in general.
Well, the, the. Maybe that's when the town would need to do a little bit more and once they knew that the ownership changed, they would send out a letter and say, this is the type of maintenance. Because the tax changes, somebody else is paying the taxes, so then you would send out something.
You've got an awful big software system that you're building. Now, now it's gonna track the taxes.
I think computers can do that. I don't think.
They can, you have to invest in it. It's an investment.
I think it's worth making and that's what we're talking about tonight.
The, the, and the mechanism, whatever it is, that the maintenance agreement could go with the, with the deed, not, you don't have to make this thing more, you know, you don't have to create loopholes. You can, you can, I think at the outset, if, if the agreement is fashioned in such a way as to be in the town's favor and to be also the other leg of it would be to be minimally burdensome to the landowner, if they played ball with the town, you'd, you know, you'd have the problems that were inherent in it, maybe could be addressed at the outset.
All right. Back to this guy, back to 33 Aspen Lane. What would we wanna do with 33 Aspen Lane as far as granting a best possible location permit?
What if it's gonna be?
Do we want to, do we want to enter into this mess now with him?
You got somebody who seems really anxious to do the right thing there.
Right.
And I'm not sure you wanna.
Well, I.
Create any negative around that.
Well, I think this.
It's positive though. It's a, we're gonna help you. If you forget to maintain it, we'll let you know. It's like, it's beneficial for everyone, because these systems will work probably.
I mean, the LID stuff, you can look at as a zoning part.
We have diversity of the other people who have the system.
Yeah, but we're just about to.
This guy though.
Exactly. Conditions.
This guy, his only issue is gonna be.
The pre-treatment.
The maintenance of his pre-treatment system.
Why is he putting in a pre-treatment system?
Because he wants to.
And it saves him four chambers.
Right.
Uses a septic dam like that.
And he will have other features too for stormwater infiltration, like the, Richard the architect was talking about, that maybe some sort of maintenance, we just don't have any sort of.
Maybe at this point in time, since we don't have a mechanism, we should bog him down.
Yeah.
We're not ready to.
I would agree with that.
But the.
We'd either wanna know if he maintains his pre-treatment system?
No.
Well, it doesn't seem right just to pick one place, one best possible location and suddenly start putting conditions on it when we.
That's fine.
We don't have a process.
Yeah. If we, if we had a way, you know, we said when we came onto the site that we were only advisory.
Right.
The one thing that.
I'm just, you know, I'm still confused about what we can do as a best possible location. Normally, it's just about the location, you know, and, and the maintenance and, and we're, you know, trying to get people to volunteer to do things the right way. So I'm not sure we can.
We have been also suggesting that they go to York County, throw the water and if there's any kind of major change that's gonna happen to the land, that they, talk to them and find out ways that they can alleviate any issues that may come up or help with some drainage issues or whatever.
Right, and then let's get the ordinance in place, so then we can start, we still have to figure, we still have to solve the problem of scheduling enforcement.
Right, right, right.
But, you know, make it part of.
All right, so then, for real, so then, I'm looking for some kind of motion on 33 Aspen Lane. Do we wanna grant him a best possible location with the location of where his place is gonna be now versus where it was?
May I raise one point? If we look at page 601, 414, in the second paragraph, it is a requirement that the planning board shall require, I'm looking second sentence in second paragraph, the planning board shall require replanting of native vegetation, yada, yada, yada. So there is a planting plan here that, I don't know if we have to.
Is that another part where it's, where it says it's necessary to remove vegetation within shoreline of RP?
Yes, correct.
All right.
Yeah. And I don't know if anybody was listening to Richard when he was explaining what is gonna happen on that site, but we were, we were under the first impression that they were gonna try and stay east of that pine knoll, initially toward the water, when in fact, he's going to, that whole pine knoll and all the pine trees to the east of the power lines there are gone. Those are removed.
You mean up top by the road?
Yeah, yeah. Which, I, you know, he's, he's within his rights to take that down, but there's quite a bit of rigmarole he has to go through in terms of replanting and.
Well, if you said, what's the deal with, in shoreline when you take down trees, how far back does it affect? Is it just 100 feet or is it 250?
First level's 75 and then it'll go up to the 250 at 40%.
All right, so there's already a mechanism, I mean, he can't clear cut all that. He can only take 40% of what's there within 250 feet.
Well, all, all I'm trying to point out is that there is a, kind of a, an area here that we have a requirement that he replants, so part of the conditions ought to be that, that, I, I'd like to see anyway, a, a list of conditions that he has to comply to regarding the replanting and then, and then maybe at some later date, we'll sign off on that or something. I mean, there's nothing in his body of work that shows anything about what they spoke very enthusiastically about, about how they're gonna do all this stormwater treatment. There's nothing, Richard said, well, I asked him, who's gonna do this in-house? Do you have a landscape architect in the firm? And he said, no. And I said, is there anybody in-house that is competent to draw the stormwater management proposals that you're speaking of? And he, I don't think he, he said there was.
No, he said he finds someone.
Yeah, so it, it appeared as though he was, he was, you know, top notch and he was gonna do a good job, but there, there isn't a lot of things to buttress that.
Which a lot of times, they're not gonna invest a ton of money into something that's gonna be denied. They don't know that they're moving forward yet.
Okay.
A lot of times, at this point, we recommend that York County Soil and Soil design a plan for them and they have to build to the plan.
Would it be, when they're not per, and I'm throwing this out to the board to, to state that as a preliminary motion is drafted verbally, that Mr. Pulis would agree to a maintenance agreement on the pre-treatment facility, point one. Point two might be that a planting plan approved by York County Soil and Water is provided and shared with Kenny Paul and the planning board, just so we at least know how he's gonna go about that, not that we have any say in it other than requiring the replanting plan. And thirdly, that, and this is where we're going out on a limb maybe, that LID mechanism shall be implemented on site where appropriate to deal with stormwater runoff.
What you talked about.
Wouldn't that be addressed in York County's?
The contours were all changed on that plan to show you where the water is gonna do. They're leveling it out near the top, they're slowing water moving all the way down the well, they're removing all the pervious, impervious materials and replacing it with
Could it grass?
Pervious materials. They're getting rid of the, the drainage that goes towards the lake off the side.
You're making, I think, a great leap of faith there when this was communicated to us just verbally.
No, 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 it's on the plan.
Yeah, it's drawings, it's swells from the drawings.
There's, there's, it has been re-contoured, I understand that, but we don't know how the, those contours are gonna affect the flow of the water and how, how, how the flow is gonna be treated, Jess, you know what I'm saying? That's all I'm saying.
They, the law says they can't have, the flow cannot be any more than it is right now, so if anything, it's gonna alleviate whatever's happening now. It's gonna be better, it has to be.
I don't think you can make it any worse than what it is.
Well, probably not, but it's, it's, it's gonna be less worse anyway.
Does, does anyone feel any level of comfort with, with stipulating any conditions about LID means to?
How we've done the prior ones was a design from York County Water and Soil, not just for the replanting, but for as many best management practices as feasible.
Right.
That would cover it, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
And we're two into one is what we've been doing.
Right.
Which usually he'll go out there and eat without, get a good idea and it's just chicken scratch.
Didn't they say they talked to him already that he's been out there or no? I thought.
I think that, I know it was a couple of months ago when you talked to him.
Is, did you find out Joe was still?
No, I hadn't heard that, just from you, I'm the only one.
I, I wouldn't think that would be a part-time deal, I would, but it may be, maybe he's got two hats. Well, those would be my suggestions for a, three points of the, of the motion.
Well, I can see the first two points. Did you wanna change the third point or did you still wanna go with the?
Well, then how, how would you, how would we tend to that?
What Kenny just said, as far as.
That's funny.
You know, York, they use York County Soil and Water for a, a planting plan or whatever you call it and best management practices for water runoff or whatever, stormwater runoff.
How about, how about just fine tuning that and saying that their, their proposal for stormwater management will be submitted to York County Water and not put the onus of responsibility to devising the plan on York County Water and Soil. That's not their job. Their job is to review. They don't design systems.
Are you, I was just talking best management practices.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Am I right, Kenny? I mean, they're reviewing.
Joe's been designing a lot of them.
Really?
They have just hand drawing a lot, the simpler ones, this, this one here, he'd probably be reviewing.
Yeah.
And that's why I was gonna say York County Water is relevant.
It's gonna take someone some time to do it, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, there's some tricky stuff.
Well, they have ideas already what they wanna do, so nobody's gonna be starting from scratch.
Well, then just to refine the third point, I guess the concept would be that we would require the applicant to submit their stormwater management proposals to York County Soil and Water for review.
For consult.
And approval. And share those, those plans with Kenny Paul.
What makes it hard for Joe Anderson is he's not sure, I mean, he's just looking at a plan. And again, anything's gonna be better than what's out there, so he's.
But they have an engineer affiliated with that service.
And do they normally give approval to plans like this?
They could review a plan and tell if it's.
Adequate to the site.
Yeah, I'd be able to respond to that comes out and tell you, you need to improve this. Well, that would be my limited.
If they just ripped out all the paving and revegetated, it's gonna be a huge difference.
Right.
Well, he went into detail what was, because they're gonna be parking on the septic, so he went into detail about that whole area and the swell coming down, you know.
Put that drought resistant grass in there. Won't have to irrigate.
Grant, it is, you know, this is what I wanna do. I've got all these great, I had great ideas when I built my place 30 years ago, two of them. I still got plywood floors, so what can I say?
Join the club.
Still happens, you know. To this group, and we're all in the same boat.
I dream of it.
Except you got paved road, I see.
Only a half mile.
Oh, really?
Yeah, two point six. That's what six years ago.
Does it go by your place?
Only above fifty feet.
Moving forward, I would put that forward as a motion. I don't know if it's too gargled for interpretation.
What is the motion? Yeah, this-
My good friend Brenda's going to move forward.
Okay, that the best practical location, application be approved contingent on three items. Agree to a maintenance agreement relative to the sewer system. Submit best managed practice plans to York County Soil and Water for review. And the LID mechanism be implemented on-site to address water runoff.
Are you saying that has to be York County or could be a comparable firm that these people decided they would like to go with?
Sure.
No, I thought that was you.
But somehow or other, we have to know. Either it's going to have an engineer stamp on it or we have to know this is credible somehow.
So that as far as the pretreatment tangos, are they going to require some sort of notification that it's been maintained? Is that what the-
Oh, that was, yeah, I think I-
The maintenance has been done?
A maintenance agreement is devised between code enforcement office and the applicant whereby-
How about if the applicant documented that they have a maintenance agreement in place with some contractor or whatever the appropriate-
Sure, yeah, that would work, we do that type of thing with them.
Yeah, with other stuff, yeah. Or like, you know, somebody that runs a garage has an agreement with someone picking his oil, you know. Yeah, just notification that a maintenance agreement is-
Has been added into or-
Yeah, added with whatever company for, you know, the pretreatment. And whatever it entails, it may be something real simple or maybe a big involved thing, but whatever it is. I'm still hung up on the third thing.
Yeah, I didn't think that was actually-
Is it LID?
I wasn't going to put that in there.
Yeah, let's eighty-six that.
But I thought I had three points.
You did, but we didn't like the-
Eighty-six.
We merged two into one.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, we did, we kind of threw it all into the soil and water with the best management practice and the vegetation.
A second.
Alright.
Sorry.
Jessica, a second. Any further discussion, we're all, y'all know what's what?
Oh, did the replanting plan get on?
That's required in the ordinance.
Yeah. Anything, we require replanting if it, if moving the structure gives us the opportunity for it. We don't require replanting of his thirty acres embedded in his property if he decides to cut.
That's where the old house was.
Right, it's where the, whatever's involved in relocating, that's where we require replanting.
The phrase they use in the book is to compensate for destroyed vegetation, so I don't know where he played.
Grass, bushes, who knows what. Or tearing up his, tearing up his, the asphalt there, you know, will require replanting of that because-
Yeah.
Because, and grass is appropriate, I mean, does grass fall into native vegetation?
Sure.
They actually say grass, is it allowable?
Something that slope the water and suck it up. Alright, so y'all know what we're talking about? Sorry, he's back. Any more comments, questions, changes, corrections?
Can, do you, do you share, do they share that planting plan with you, tied to some level of approval?
The revegetation plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright there. No more comments?
I'll listen. And I have one more thing, it's just something that someone mentioned to me at the site. Tim Spang, the contractor there, he mentioned that, he was talking about the boat launch itself there and that they obviously want to take that out, which I think is great, and revegetate it and it's fantastic. But he did mention that Greg wanted him to take it out this fall and he was nervous he wouldn't be able to stabilize it over the winter without, you know, proper time to revegetate. And I was just putting it out there, he just mentioned it to me.
Well-
So I didn't know exactly where we were at with that, but, I mean, I think, he said he could do it in the spring easily enough. I mean, it would revegetate much faster and I think that's a good option.
You don't get the spring room. They'd almost have to do it right now if they wanted to get something growing.
Yeah, he said he could be down there for three to four weeks at the earliest. Because it's how it came up was I was asking him where he's going to be driving with his machine on the lawn, because I was like, you don't want to run up the lawn too much, and then that's when he brought it up.
I don't know how much that's going to impinge on this motion here.
It's nice to bring these things out before the motion, just so it's-
Right.
You could just condition it, just say-
The board, maybe the board advises that that last part of the launch, which is be revegetated in the spring as opposed to in the fall.
And then ripped out.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
Well, it's scarback now.
Except if it's ripped out, then you might get erosion.
Yeah, you get a little valley there maybe, and especially if there's a lot of other disturbed soil around the site. I mean, it was something that the contractor expressed to me, so.
I mean, you know, you can put hay bales down there, you can dump hay all over.
Sod, there's a dozen different things.
Yeah, right, there's all kinds of ways it could be addressed.
See, relatively simple thing though, though.
If they did it now, they may still have to reseed in the spring too. I don't know, I'm not comfortable with, and something may happen and the contractor may not be able to get out there anyway.
Oh, absolutely, you know, it's just something that came up.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
And Kenny said it would be great if he did this particular aspect of the project, you know, in the spring. I think that would be great.
Kenny, would you make him, no matter what happened to that paved area, whether he tried to dig it up and revegetate it or do whatever with it, wouldn't he have to put in, or if he left the baton there, wouldn't he have to put in a silt fence at the toll of that anyway?
Erosion control, no matter what he did it, it could just be stump grinding is the easiest.
But no matter what he did, he'd have to do something.
Right.
Yeah, to tell with the slope.
Yeah, yeah. And do you inspect that kind of stuff before?
Erosion control, yeah, it's a first inspection.
Anything else?
I'm just putting it out there.
Right. Alright, let's work then. I'll also favor Brandon, best possible location permit with the two aforementioned conditions on it. Say hi.
Hi.
I'll suppose nay. It's a done deal.
May we ask him through Kenny to send us a minute back to visit what was done?
I think you already asked him and he said yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said anytime, go out there, the builder did it anyway. And sort of what, sort of the- Alright, stormwater, did y'all get a chance to review that? Got any questions for us? We did go through this one time as far as blah, 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 blah. I'm sure you all spent the last two weeks going over it and rolling their heads.
Can we pass art and note?
That's it?
Can I pass art and note?
Yeah, sure.
Are we good for Sunday?
We what?
Good for Sunday.
Sunday?
Yes.
When are you going to pick them up?
Tomorrow or Saturday?
Tomorrow?
Or Saturday?
Tomorrow in the morning?
In the morning? Yes, I want to do that tomorrow night at another coffee morning. Thank you, Art, you're the whole reason I'm here, I'm going.
Alright. What the heck is it? Oh, must've been here. Stormwater. What the heck is it, stormwater?
Are we just going to go over the guarantee stuff at the end?
Is that what we need to get to?
Well, I think Ken was going to, maybe I have all my time.
He was going to-
Kenny's impression there with one hour, is that so?
No, this was something that he-
Oh, he was going to help us with the maintenance. And he's still struggling with that.
Well, let's see, check, 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 check. I don't know if we went through it all or if we stopped somewhere.
Can we just take a couple of sections now, given that it's eight o'clock?
Absolutely.
What's the date on the bottom?
I got six August two oh one two. What?
Oh, nine, yeah, nine twenty twelve, so I missed off.
Mine says August sixth.
You have the twentieth?
I just said a date that that's maybe, it says JT Lockman, nine twenty twelve, in my hand.
Says this is draft two thirteen September two twenty.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Yeah, I got one from August sixth and one from thirteenth of September.
I got February two thousand and twelve.
February two. No, that's August seventeen.
It's August.
It's February, oh wait, maybe it's in here.
So who took mine? Sheriff. One of these moocs. September thirteen. September thirteen, page one of ten. This is what the correction team made for us. So, who wants to start? Go ahead.
Do you want me to make some copies of that one?
You not have enough? Who doesn't have one? I don't have, I didn't do anything.
I shouldn't have it.
Okay, straight from washing dishes. Don't cop any of the swears that are on there.
No.
Quite enough. Alright, we'll take five minutes, more than you got. We can always do that, past years ago. Take a photo, smoke cigarettes, yeah. Take a break. Hey, put that sign in your drive. With all the sparklers there, sure as rock.
That's great. We are getting kind of crazy this year.
Last week, September. Alright, so thirteen September twenty twelve, in ordinance, blah, 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 page one. Anyone got any comments, questions? See any problems with folding this into the ordinance? Anything not clear? Anything you want to make clearer? The only man, I think, did he make a change to this page or not? I think he did. Well, let's see. I don't know, because I don't have the different colors.
You compared it to August?
Yeah, something's different, because- Maybe you sound fostered on that. Yeah, just this spacing. Alright, so page one. Well, we were going to add parking lot in there too. Yes, would you? Well, wait, well, here. Was it October fourth? Which day is it? Was it twentieth? It was the fourth? Was it the sixth?
On October fourth, we did, yeah, whatever position we used.
So five fifteen point five B inclusion of parking areas for vehicles in impervious surface limitations. Now, that's Greek. Where's it like? Inclusion of parking areas for vehicles.
That's on page five?
Four, seven, five fifteen.
Five.
So that would be page five. Very good. Parking areas for something. Parking areas should be ample in size for the proposition, should be designed to prevent stormwater runoff from flowing directly into the water via trip tissue or wetland, and where feasible, to retain all runoff on-site. A newly constructed or newly established parking area shall comply with section five twenty-four four. Oh.
If you look at the September-
Yeah, five twenty-five four.
Twenty-eight.
Oh, yeah. Parking areas should be included in twenty percent impervious surface limitations. Da-da-da-da-da-da-da. Jeez, you know, the back and forth and do different things. What a mishmash.
What does flowing directly?
Pardon me?
What does flowing directly mean? Like shoot a fire or something? I mean, is that like over a certain distance or?
I would imagine if something is flowing directly into a water body, it's headed straight for a water body with nothing blocking its way. And it's going to run right into it. See, because when you're talking parking areas, you may be talking something that's a little more impervious than pervious. So the opportunity for runoff is greater. And if there's going to be runoff, it can't flow directly into the pond, lake, river, stream, whatever. Alright?
That means, that means there's a party to be-
Some LID or some kind of management practice that keeps the water. I mean, isn't there a setback from body of water in the first place on something like a parking lot?
There is in the shoreline zone for new, new stuff.
Right, but not, not anything that's already been there. But if you're going to design a parking area, you can't design it so that water running off is going to directly flow into a water body. It has to be somehow diverted or-
Infiltrated, yeah.
Yeah. Somehow keep it-
Some sort of buffer needs to be between the parking area and the-
And the stream, lake, pond, whatever. Alright? Whether it's a swell, a French drain, a rip rap or whatever the devil. And probably simply because, again, a parking area is going to be, you know, give you more opportunity for runoff because it's going to be a harder surface. I don't think you design a parking area over grass or over a lawn because over time it's just going to erode the ground. You got to have something a little bit harder. And the harder something is, the more chance you have for runoff.
On September sixth of the minutes regarding that section, those we have are also add the requirement that newly constructed or newly established parking lots comply with stormwater runoff. So is this, this A that you're talking about on September twentieth minutes?
No, we're talking about on the September twentieth minutes, number two under unfinished business.
I see that.
A five point one five point five B, that's what we're looking at. The B, that's on page five of the September thirteen draft. Because A wasn't changed, B was.
Are we okay with that? Reading is-
If you look at-
JT revised it.
If you look at August sixth draft from JT, you can see the change he made from then to now. If you look at August sixth, uh, draft from JT, you can see the change he made from then to now. He more or less added the cross-referencing jazz. In fact, he did. He, the last, I think it's the last full sentence, "All parking areas for vehicles shall be included, blah, blah, blah." That is the new thing he added between August sixth and September thirteenth. Because of the questions we had on September... Twenty eighth? Yeah. When he came to talk to us. All right? Art, are you got a better handle of directly into the...
Well, we, you know, people park on the grass when they come to pick their own apples.
All right, is that, is that a... Are you in the shoreline zone?
I'm not quite bothered, because you're not.
You could certainly make, you know, some kind, you can get a parking area designed if you want. But they don't park there that often, it's just a few. It's, well, be that as it may. You can design a parking area up there if you wanted. And if you did, you have to make sure that the water didn't go directly to some, the runoff didn't go directly to some water source. B. Five twenty five four little A. Address continued maintenance.
Well, times, are we ready to sign off on five fifteen five B? Because that, that does lead you down to five twenty five four.
Right.
So there's a little appendix there, so to speak, that we, you have to look at. To see if you're willing to embrace five fifteen five B.
Well, that was already there, that wasn't, that wasn't an addition. That was already there, he had added that initially for August sixth. What he, the new thing, the changes that came up from what we were talking to, is the very dark shading.
The last sentence.
The last six, "All parking areas for blah, blah, blah."
Can we, can we, uh...
Sign off with it?
Show hands and, yeah, just cross something off on this today?
Well, I don't know, it's a lot of, what did Art say, it's a lot of cross-referencing and... Is it all something that's gonna flow easily, Ken? Or is it, uh...
At least... It's in the same section.
Are you dealing with this Green Building Council, L E E D trademark?
Lead certified, uh, you see that out there a little bit.
So they just tell us what they want it constructed of? That stuff or geo-block or something similar? Sounds fine to me.
That's what they do in those rocks.
Oh, then it's good enough for acting in LLC. All right, happy?
Okay.
Good.
So I'll put a check there, right?
Absolutely. Five twenty five four smaller A. Address continued maintenance. Five twenty five four. What was he gonna put for a small A?
Ken, do you have a copy of that thing or...
It's, uh, is that one of the things I walked off? The L I D guidance manual. They're throwing that out as, as a source for, um... Perspective, uh, the plan shall include provisions for continued maintenance as specified in the L I D G M. So maybe there's some templates that we could use for, uh, for that thing that we were trying to hash out really.
Again, what he added was... Well, he already had that L I D guidance manual. And he added the plan shall include provisions for continued maintenance as specified in the L I D G M. Which is what we wanted.
And that failure to do so would be in violation of the ordinance.
Pardon me?
And that failure to do so would be in violation of the ordinance and subject to provisions in Article six, which...
So we, we gotta do a little homework to see if that's something that's compatible. If what's compatible, if the maintenance provisions that are spelled out in this, um...
L I D G M.
Guidance manual are something that we can live with, yeah. And that it works okay. Or if we have to, you know, make a hybrid.
Oh, yeah, let's reinvent the wheel, E B.
Well, let's just put a question mark there and we'll get familiar with what, what that, what those recommendations are and see if it's something we can live with. I don't, I don't know what they had.
Yeah.
Is that, is there a copy of that floating around the code office?
I don't remember it with the date and the coastal program and stuff, but it's, I'm sure we get it right on the D E P website.
Could you access that and see what it all entails and if it's something, well, yeah.
Yeah, I know we had one printed out before, but I don't remember the two, the September two thousand and seven date on it. Or that it mentioned the coastal program.
I might have that at home, because I walked off some of that stuff. Yeah, I have it, just to look at.
Well, get cracking, buddy. Calling up this whole thing now. You put a question mark here and you're the one with the answer. All right, so we'll blow that off. See, five twenty five four B. Well, okay, within the shoreline, is that what you did?
I apologize, because I wasn't at that meeting, but why is Commercial B District included in...
It's close to Wilson.
Because it's close to there.
Right. And, uh, yeah, and we've included it in our, uh... In this whole ball of wax, RP, shoreline, and Commercial B. Simply because it's right next to, in fact, part of Commercial B probably is within two hundred and fifty feet of the water. So, ergo delecto, bingo.
All Commercial, all Commercial B is down there, right?
Yeah. Just a little tiny... Down towards the fairgrounds.
There's a Commercial A along the ridge, I think, and then there's a Commercial A down by, behind you.
Yeah, B's just the last bit of one oh nine from Youngs Ridge Road going... To New Hampshire. All right? Uh, the three zones are, they're in there. So we're fine with having those three zones put in there, correct?
So, we'll, we'll hold up the, the signing off on, uh... Five two five A.
Till we get a copy of the four A, yeah.
Till we see what that... Can we move back then to, uh... At the beginning and just see how far we want to go?
We did, we went through. I mean, we've gone to at least up through five twenty five, and he made those changes that we addressed. Why don't we look at...
Stop at six, yeah.
Yeah, let's look at, yeah, let's look at administration. And, uh... I think, I don't see any changes on, uh... Any additional changes. How is, uh... How does six read to you, people? How do you like me in August and... No. Six, six, three, seven, any issues with that, anybody?
Ken, is there a problem, again? Any, anything that... Hit you with a head on second six, Ken? I, I have a philosophical question, going back one, I'm sorry. Five fifteen five B calls into, um, attention, five twenty five four. And JT has left us with the notion of, um, in the second line there on page five in the September edition. Exactly review or condition use review is required pursuant to the land use chart. Okay, that is my own question. Pursuant to the land use chart.
All right?
Thank you.
No changes were made to six or the performance guarantees. We did mention, we did talk about, uh... Requirements for new work and/or maintenance. What the hell does that mean? Does anyone have any note on the, like, page ten, the last part about, um, security bonds? Anyone have any notes around that area?
I have, um, some dotted notes on the, uh, six.
Six, six, four, nine, two.
We wanted a definition, this was, was that before we talked to John? I remember John Lockman saying that we could be getting ourselves into... Tough stuff to, to live up to if we were gonna have a performance guarantee, so he advised against it, but... We were just, all I have is a question, what's the best way to address it, create a tracking system, do we charge a fee? Or are we just gonna be happy to have clean water? And, um, I wrote something about engineer review type model. So I don't know what I was...
Hopefully this is what...
Oh, engineer review.
Yeah, I remember some discussion at a point about how it had to be reviewed by an engineer view.
Right, and JT's...
And whatever mitigation practices were.
Well, I know you said for the most part, they had to be designed by, you know, somebody to do what was going on.
Yeah, you said that.
You couldn't do it on your own. And, uh, if that's the case, if someone has to review it, then they're gonna probably need the same expert, area of expertise, or the amount of expertise. But I didn't, I didn't have any notes for that, though.
I'm not familiar with your book, the letter of credit.
No? Or is it, what page?
Page ten, number two.
Letter of credit? The applicant may provide your revocable letter of credit from a bank or other reputable lending institution licensed to do business in main. Well, a letter of credit...
I know a letter of credit, I'm...
Good, explain it that way.
What's a revocable, what's a revocable letter of credit?
Means that the applicant can't, uh, give, yeah, can't renege, can't take it away. It has to be mutually agreed upon. It's, it's for a certain amount of time, and it's kinda like a bond. And when that time's up, it can be lengthened or... Or terminated, but both parties need to be, uh, I believe both, both parties need to sign on to it or sign off on it, whatever. It, it just, again, it's a guarantee that the funds are available for the town to finish the project or whatever it's, the letter of credit's designed for, in the case the applicant can't, all right? And it's, rather than saying, you only have one method of ensuring that there'll be money for this job, you have to give me a bag of cash. We give them three options. You can have a security bond, which means you have, you know, you've set aside that X amount of money. A letter of credit, meaning the monies are available.
Well, it's not a letter...
It's not set aside, but the bank says that this person has this amount of money. Your revocable letter of credit. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm not a banker, so...
Man, I can't imagine anybody would ever give anybody a revocable letter of credit.
Well, maybe it's, maybe somebody...
By my understanding...
This is a boilerplate deal anyway, we have this forever. And usually you see this with subdivisions, you know, they're...
Just so they can't be canceled or modified in any way?
All right, can't be canceled or modified.
Does anybody ever qualify for such a...
I think somebody did one time, somebody had signed, years, it might have been before you, somebody had a letter of credit with this.
Oh, we get them all the time, it's...
Well, do we vocal part the, the banks kick up?
And they just, the banks just...
They won't give you any of that.
Well, they'll, even the letter of credits, um, that's for a year or something like that. And if the year's up, they're not telling us or anything. It's another tracking thing.
Well, this, this goes back to that same, how do we ensure that the maintenance...
Yep.
Well, this is something that...
I think they'll fund the security bond and escrow account, that's, you know, pretty straightforward.
Right. But what that does is that, that ties money up, though, correct?
Yeah.
Whereas a letter of credit...
I don't think the security bond, I don't think does.
Well, you gotta, you gotta buy the bond, though. You gotta put something up to, to guarantee it, don't you?
Nothing more than they just set up a thing in the bank where they have to maintain a particular amount of money in an account.
All right, so that's tying up, that's tying up...
In their own bank.
Right, but that's tying up their money, they can't use that money, all right? That, that's, that's all that we're trying to do here is... The town knows that there is an amount of money that we can't access, because we're always assigned to eat all these things, in the event we need to.
Is this the same type of bond as, you know, you get bonded if you're, uh, you get some fiduciary responsibilities in some organization?
Beats me, what's that? Oh, oh, uh, no, this is, this is a money type thing, I think. Because, now, we do get notified with bonds when they expire, because that's happened in the past. Specifically for a subdivision. We were notified by the bonding company that the two years were up or whatever, and the bond was, you know, being, you know, everything was done, it was being... Whatever you call it, closed down or whatever. So we do get notified, we have been for that type of deal. These other ones, I have no idea. Maybe the treasurer gets some kind of...
We require him to post a bond for recommending a great grab.
Well, can we, can we put this on a, on a, uh, study list and, and have to look and hopefully...
Do we want somebody to come in and explain it to us?
No, no.
Sincerely? No?
Questioning why you would have it, it's not...
Because work is being done that is gonna directly affect the lakes. And we wanna guarantee that if for some reason the job doesn't get completed...
I'm not down that, I'm not down that.
And this is just a new ordinance anyways, it's something new being taxed.
No, no, this is, and it's been there forever, so...
I think we added the last couple of words last year.
I have my, yeah, I don't know. I know we threw one up, because we used to have a bag of cash. Specific bag of cash. But it was in there. But it was in there.
I, I'm at 27.
Really?
Good.
I just like it, I think it's cool.
I'd love to see a bag of cash.
But that used to be one of the four things and it got taken out a few years ago because nobody ever did it.
Well, can we look at this guidance manual and see if that. Sets off any lights?
You're gonna, you're gonna scrap the one you got at home and bring that one. You're gonna see what we can, how we can access one.
And let's try.
It's available online.
Oh, it, I'm sure it probably is. But not on my computer since.
I mean, the root of it to that is that it's got to be, I think it has to be an initial agreement with the application. It has to provide site access and it has to provide notifications. And, and there might be a phasing in of the, of the. The tool, call it what you will, but. It has to have those three criteria, I think, necessarily to, to work and probably some more. And the, the thing that scares us all, I think, about the improvement guarantees are, they're, they're pretty burdensome on. A single-family residential development to start proposing. And any one of those, the security bond, letter of credit or an escrow account.
Oh.
I thought we were shying away from that. And looking for a.
If the offer of the word in there is may.
More user-friendly.
Performance guarantees may be. May be required, I understand.
Performance guarantees may be provided by a variety of means, including but not limited to the following, which must be approved as of the form and enforceability by the board.
Page 8 under 6.6.3.9A, it says the planning board may require.
6.6, what?
6.6.3.9, man's guarantee, under A, it says planning board may require.
Right. They have to get the temporary certified check payable.
Right. Says may require.
Right.
So you don't have to.
Right. But that can open up a whole bag of worms too. Somebody could yell, cry foul. You're making him pay or you're making me pay but not my neighbor down the street? Why? Did he used to be a selectman? Why, you like that guy better than me? Why, you don't like my chickens out? What's the deal? So that's.
He's got a plow that's long.
Yeah. He doesn't, I could be super good. He's one step away from being a homeless.
Well, let's study that one and see how the Detroit Lions are doing.
The who? Tigers?
Detroit Tigers, sorry.
She's a crackers, baby.
Yeah, who they playing in the football game?
The Lions are, yeah.
It's a small ball.
Alright, so. We'll see if we get the LID manual for next time or we can peruse that. Or if it's something, something real simple. You know, if it's just a page or two, you can just email us that. Anything more than a few pages, my computer just.
Could we please have some guidance from my colleague Postman?
He's been, he's been at it all night long.
What else you can do?
Well, I mean, there could be cakes, there could be fines, there could be incentives.
Let's hit it for me.
Whoever had an opportunity.
Got to move on.
Subterms.
You must have it.
It shows now. Anything else for that stuff? Anything else for Kenny tonight?
Yeah, all J D said about, was that maybe we're reaching for a town our size.
For what, performance guarantees?
Tracking, yeah, tracking the performance guarantees and tracking just about anything else we want to track. It's, there is software, there is one, it's just, he seemed to think it was more than.
Our esteemed selectman, Mr. Walsh, has said that he would come to bed for us for that. Kenny, here.
Well, we've got to get prices first.
We gotta get the ordinance passed. So for next time, it looks like we're just, we'll be looking at the scroll water ordinance again. Unless something else interesting comes up.
If it's not interesting, go put it on the agenda. Gotcha.
It's gotta be good television. Got it, anything else? Tonight cable in? See ya.